Declaration of interest. If members or officers have an interest in any item being discussed today, Madam Chair, Council Brian Owen. There isn't anything on the agenda. But if someone did make a comment about Orthios, I do declare an interest. Anybody else? Thank you. So we'll go on to the third item. And to the announcements, I take it that it's only me that has some announcements this morning. Since the last council, the coronavirus situation has improved, but it's still important that everybody follows the national guidelines. Once again, may I thank the council staff for their tireless work in continuing to maintain council services? And thank you also to organisations across the island for their invaluable work. It's a pleasure for me to congratulate and welcome two new members to the county council. You've already heard their voices. Council Jeff Evans, who has been elected to represent the Holyhead ward and councillor Gary Pritchard, who has been elected to represent the Sariel ward. Congratulations to both of you. And we look forward to working with you for the benefit of Anglesey citizens. I'd like to congratulate Sheen Appy Orthmouth on his success. Sheen was re-elected to represent the uniscore constituency in the Senedd. Congratulations also to a woman from Anglesey who will be joining Sheen in the Senedd, Helad Vichan, a member for central South Wales and Vaughan Hughes's daughter. I'd like to thank the team in the election service and all the staff who helped for their hard work and the difficult circumstances. Thank you very much. Congratulations to Lastra in Amloch for their success in the Small Hotels Awards 2021, as we saw on S4C last night. I'd also like to congratulate Vaughan Roberts on being appointed to the post of director of social service recently. And also congratulations to Christian Branch. He is the new head of regulation and economic development. It was very sad to hear about the death of the former county councillor John Arwel Edwah, who represented the Llamet Poheria. We sympathise with the family. Our condolences to the family of the former councillor Keith Evans, my name is Brigid. Mister Evans gave a lifetime service to local government. And he was the former chair of the Borough Council, as well as serving on this council. We received some very sad news over the weekend about the sudden death of a council employee. Trevor Win Jones, aged 55, and following a short illness. Trevor worked in the Byron Centre workshop, working there since 2003. He was a lively character and a friend to everyone. We sympathise with his family and his colleagues in the Byron Centre. We sympathise with Yola Richards, following her recent bereavement. Our condolences also to any member of the council or staff who have been bereaved. And if we may have a period of silence as a mark of respect, please. Thank you. So now we move on to item four. And this is a notice of motion from councillor Bob Harry. I am afraid he's on mute. I'm making this motion under Rule 4.1.13.1 of the Constitution. The Isle of Anglesey County Council wishes to acknowledge the terrible miscarriage of justice that former councillor Mr Noel Thomas suffered when he was wrongly convicted of false accounting 16 years ago. The council would like to invite Mr Thomas to attend the next full meeting in the council chamber. I'd like to add that to the motion. So the next meeting in the council chamber, so that he might receive a formal vote of gratitude for his faithful service as a county councillor. Thank you. May I speak? This is a person who has suffered because the post office weren't willing to accept the blame and to correct the system they had. He, Noel, was taken before the court. He pleaded guilty following his solicitor's advice so that he would receive a lesser sentence. He was the only, he wasn't the only one sent to prison because a number of people across the country were sent to prison. There was a long battle. And it was one, and a few months ago, the Courts of Appeal in London overturned the conviction against him. After coming out of prison, he fought hard to achieve this and we're very pleased that he has achieved this. Because Noel was a very popular councillor in the area. And it was a big loss to the area. It has been a very difficult period for the family and I can't imagine how hard it was for them whilst waiting for justice. I'll never forget Noel's picture coming out to court and being led to the prison van. The village of Gairwen and the residents supported him throughout. He was employed locally after being released from prison. I remember Noel coming to the council for the first time. I might be incorrect, but I think it was at the time when Mister Jones, the chemist in Gairwen, had resigned. He increased his votes in every election. And I'm sure if it wasn't for this, he would be with us today. Usually when a councillor resigns or retires, we give them a gift. So I think we should acknowledge his service to the county council, that he should attend the next meeting of the county council in the council chamber, so that we can give him a gift. I please ask for your support. Thank you. This is supported by councillor William Jones. Yes, it's a pleasure, Madam Chair, to second this proposal from councillor Bob Harry. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councillor Aled Morris Jones. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I fully support what has been said. And perhaps councillor Bob Harry, I can tell you exactly when councillor Noel Thomas started as a member of the Borough Council, which is in 1986. I've known Noel since the beginning of the eighties, when we started on the political path together. The reason I'm so sure of the date is I don't remember the exact date, but I do remember the year. And the reason is because I was elected on the same day in another election to the Rossell Ball Community Council. So it's good to see justice being done. I saw Noel and the family recently to congratulate them. They've been through hell over the last few years. And hearing Noel say about the good work that the BBC reporter Sean T. Quinn had done, bringing this story to the attention of the BBC, which is the tragedy of the Horizon computer system. And the words that have stuck in my mind is, as Noel said, when we found out that we weren't alone, and that was four years into this injustice. We wish Noel and the family well as they carry on with their lives. Any sum of compensation won't make up for the injustice that they as a family have suffered and the number of other families across the UK. But as a county council, we can show our respect and can show our support to Noel and the family. And it's a pleasure to support the motion. Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Delan Rees. Yes, what's happened to Mister Noel Thomas, of course, is terribly sad. He lost his livelihood, he lost his home, he lost his good name, he lost his role as a county councillor, a role that he accomplished conscientiously and and of course he had to go to prison as a result of what has been reported in the press as one of the greatest miscarriages of justice in British legal history. And I'm very grateful for the kind words of support we've just heard from councillor Aled Morris Jones. Because of course, this isn't a political proposal, but a proposal for us as a full council to show our humanity towards Mister Thomas. And I've been in touch with the family and they do appreciate the motion in front of us this morning. And I hope that we can all support this motion. And this will just show that we do support Mister Thomas and we want to councillor John Arwel Roberts. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I also echo everything that has been said. And I support the proposal that he comes to the next meeting of the county council in the council chamber. So if nobody else wants to add anything, we'll have a vote. Thank you. Councillor Richard Doole. Councillor John Arwell Roberts, could you please take your hand down? So in favour of this motion, councillor Richard Doole, in favour. Councillor Jeff Evans. I think he's on mute. Councillor Evans.
I'm totally in favour of the proposal.
Thank you. Councillor John Griffith. I'm very pleased to say that I'm in favour. Councillor Richard Griffiths. Yes, in favour, Madam Chair. Councillor Glenn Haines.
Yes, in favour, Madam Chair.
Councillor Cheryl Lighthouse. In favour. Councillor Ken Hughes. In favour. Councillor Vaughan Hughes. In favour. Councillor Sheena Smithy Hughes, I fully support. Councillor Catherine Jones. Very pleased to be in favour. A gentleman. Councillor Midon Jones, I am pleased to support councillor Eric Jones. In favour, all the way. Councillor Ofbath Wily Jones, yes, very good, and I'm in favour. Councillor Aled Morris Jones, in favour, Madam Chair. Councillor William Jones has seconded councillor Alim Mery. It's a pleasure to support and to add one thing that Noel hasn't lost, which is his self-respect. Thank you. Councillor Brian Owen. Once again, a pleasure to support. Councillor Bob Harry has proposed. Councillor Gary Pritchard. In favour, and I'm very pleased to do so in my first vote. Councillor Delan Rees, in favour. Councillor Alin Roberts. More than happy to support, in favour. Councillor David Roberts, totally in favour. Councillor John Arwell Roberts, yes, in favour. Councillor Nicola Roberts, yes, totally in favour. Councillor Peter Rogers.
Again, totally in favour.
Councillor David H. Thomas, I'm very pleased to vote in favour. Councillor Jan Williams, in favour. And councillor Robyn Williams. I'm also pleased to say that I'm in favour. Thank you. So that has been accepted unanimously. So there aren't any petitions. Item six. The leader of the council's annual report. Councillor Sheena Smithy Hughes, please. Yes, thank you. It's difficult to believe that this is my fourth annual report. And when I started writing them in 2017, I didn't think that we'd be facing a global pandemic and that it would have so much of an effect on my report and my work as council leader. An 11-year-old boy has proof read this report. So I think it's important that young people do read our, about our work and that the message is conveyed clearly. The 11-year-old boy said he understands it. I'm not sure if he enjoyed it, but I hope that you've enjoyed reading it more than him. The, this period has been very challenging. And I know thank you is a simple word and I know that I repeat it throughout the report. But I prefer to say too often than not often enough. The commitment of Anglesey officers has been amazing, as was recognised in the scrutiny committee recently by all parties. Also out in our communities, our communities have come together, volunteers have come together. And everybody has safeguarded and looked after each other. I think Anglesey is recognised as being a welcoming place and somewhere that looks after its citizens. I've been concerned mostly about the vulnerable people in the community, but everybody has been vulnerable in this period. So can I thank the officers, the community and all the agencies for coming together to do the best for the people of Anglesey? I don't want to bore you by going through the report in detail. It could have been a longer report, but I've tried to to show how services have adapted and how the public have come with us on this journey. The work of the youth team who have been out on the streets supporting during this period, you know, that's totally different work to what they usually do. And who'd imagine that we'd have a click and collect system to collect books from libraries? The services have changed immensely. But also during the period, we've continued with the business as usual, as we call it. And we have continued with that work. It was good to be able to set a budget this year. We know that the financial situation has been a huge challenge since I became leader. But this year, we had the second lowest increase across Wales in the council tax. We've also invested in our young people with the traineeship programme. We've got plans to look at climate change. So I think those were positive steps in what has been a negative year. You can see we have housing plans, we have community plans, for example, working with the town council in Holyhead on the 3G pitch. We've also upgraded the pier in Bumares. I've also tried to look at national and regional issues. And one thing I hope is that although Anglesey is small, I want to ensure that we have a strong voice and I'm trying to make sure that that voice is heard nationally as often as possible. I have influenced a number of issues during the Covid period. One thing is we became a pilot centre for the TTP programme. We weren't supposed to be, but we did become a pilot area and we did have the first outbreak here in Langemni in the Three Sisters factory. So that's how important the national work is and to ensure that we do try and influence as much as possible. At the end, I say thanks and I'd like to thank you all as councillors for the way that you have worked over the last year. The way you've worked with the officers, the executive and myself as leader. We might be a small island, but we are the land of the can do and we can achieve anything if we work together. So with those few words, I propose my report. Thank you. And the deputy leader to second, please. I think he's on mute. Thank you. Yes, I'm very pleased to second this report. And also to reuse the word thanks again. I think we should be very pleased that we have a leader who goes the extra mile. I know of the hours that the leader has put in representing us and the island's citizens nationally and regionally. I think it just shows you, looking back at our performance, we have progressed to be one of the best performing councils in Wales.
Apologies, I only wanted to note that I only received David Thomas's dialogue in Welsh only. So I'm not sure why that occurred.
All right, I only wanted to endorse what Jeff was saying. We've just lost, lost that. I would just like to make a slight contribution to the leaders' report. You know, I agree with her, it's been an amazing year and we certainly have reacted tremendously. But I think that as an authority that we've got to, you know, face the challenges that we are. And nobody came more clear to me than yesterday when I spoke to somebody in education in, 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 in teaching who said to me, "A smart uniform hides a lot." And I think that a lot of young people have very, very, been very, very damaged during this, this time. And we really have got to pull together to make sure we recognise the importance of young people for the future. And I would, this, this, this is really a, a problem. You know, they don't always show it, but they've been deeply damaged. One other thing, it's very easy, you know, to accept and agree and praise everybody. And I think that that is quite right today, that it has been a tremendous challenge, you know, and, 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 you know, we have, you have produced, you know, we have come up to the plate. There is one slight criticism that I'm sure that you will take on board in the way that I'm delivering it. I think the, the, during this last 12 months, communications have been exceptionally difficult. You know, there are people who are telling me now that they've, in desperation, they've gone to the council offices and they're still closed. And they try to use the telephone system. You know, there's so much in the, in the queue and then eventually it comes to five o'clock and it's all, it's all gone. But I think there is a warning there. I think that we ought to have a look at communications. We need to be able to communicate with, 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 with our communities and with our ratepayers across the island. But that, that is the only thing. Otherwise, I think that you, you're quite right. We, it's been an amazing year. We have stepped up to the plays and delivered. But I hope that we can just take on board those two very important things that I've raised this morning. Thank you.
No, 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 no.
Well, Matt, so how good the past year has been? As education portfolio holder, I realise that young people have problems. One thing that isn't mentioned in the report is that it's affected the exams and assessments for a number of them. Looking back at the year, there's always room for improvement, but I, may I take this opportunity to say that difficult decisions have had to be made and that we've had strong and clear leadership from Pinos. Due to the local situation, we had to make a decision not to reopen schools in Anglesey to ensure that everybody is safe. As Yian said, we have to acknowledge the hours of work she's put in. I'd like to say thank you very much, Sheena, and I look forward to the next year. Councillor Richard Doole, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to reiterate the words spoken by the deputy leader, thank you to the leader for everything she's done over the last year. Not only has she had to do her day-to-day work, but the additional work with the pandemic, the hours she's put in. And how staff have coped with the changes. But as portfolio holder for public protection, I have to thank this department. You know, they've coped with Covid and the work as a result of Brexit. So I'd like to thank them for all the work. And thank you to all the council workers. Thank you. Before I bring councillor Richard Griffiths in. The translation should be working now. Can you hear the translation now, councillor Rogers?
Yeah.
And councillor Glenn Haines.
Back to Noel. Thank you, thank you.
And councillor Jeff Evans, thank you.
This is working now.
Councillor Richard Griffiths, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to Sheena Smithy for the report. Once again, her work has been amazing. I must say, she's put her life on hold. And what she does for the citizens of Anglesey is amazing. She is one of a team of women in Anglesey. Including Mrs Anne-Marie Morgan, Nicola Magret. You're a fantastic team. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Jeff Evans has his hand up. Would you like to come in?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to say that as someone who has only just rejoined council, it has been extremely pleasing to watch the work of the council over this past four years. So I'm able to give a view from outside of councillors. I have found the leader to be extremely friendly. I have found the leader to be extremely friendly, available, amenable to all. And I just want to congratulate both her and the partnership working that has gone in with all parties within the council to ensure we are the progressive, safe island. It's been a pleasure to observe from the outside. So congratulations, especially to Linnos, but to all concerned.
Thank you. Councillor Chavell O'Teas, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Linnos for the report and to congratulate her for her work over the year and also to the officers. We must remember it's been a very difficult time. And together we are stronger. That's the motto of the Wales Football Association. Thank you. And Councillor Carwyn Jones. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few words about the annual reports from the leader. In terms of my own portfolio, I'd like to thank the departments who've worked this year and who've had the very hard time responding to the Covid pandemic from maritime tourism, leisure, the countryside and coast. It's good to see that the upgrading work on the Bumaris peer is mentioned in the report and it'll be an important asset for Anglesey. There's been an investment of nearly a quarter of a million in this important asset. We moved on as well, as noted by the leader. We've also made progress whilst dealing with coronavirus. And I'd like to thank the economic department who've worked tirelessly to help businesses on Anglesey, answering thousands of inquiries and administering grants. They've distributed around £25 million to businesses to help them through this emergency. And they provided support and answered questions. So it's been a heroic effort from everybody. It's important to note that local people are very grateful for Linnos's leadership. It's not just us as councillors. The local residents are also grateful. Linnos has done everything to safeguard the people of Anglesey. She's responded quickly to everything that has happened, every outbreak. She's responded. She's been on her feet until the early hours of the morning. No matter where they live, everybody says they're very proud of the role played by Linnos. Both in terms of Covid and leading the council. A number of politicians and wannabe politicians talk the talk. A lot of people can't speak well, but Linnos can walk the walk. Thank you. Thank you. May I come in please? Sorry, David. My hand has been up for a while as well. I'll come to you later, Councillor Alec Morris-Jones. I just wanted to respond to Councillor Rogers's comments. I agree there have been huge problems with the telephone system. I'd like to assure you that we are investing in all the systems to ensure that we do improve, especially the county council's telephone system. Thank you, Councillor Alec Morris-Jones. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Following on from what Councillor David Hayes has said, can you give us a timeframe about when the phone systems will be improved? Because we do have a concern, we did have a concern about the phone system before Covid broke out. The public are frustrated that they can't get through to the correct departments and also looking forward to the future. When will Cysyllmaw be reopening? When will it be reopened safely to people coming into the council and also safe for the residents as well? And thirdly, as the Covid situation improves and carries on improving, will we see the democratic system moving back to the council possibly in September? So can we make a commitment to bring the councillors back to the building? For those councillors who wish to do so, of course, I respect that everybody would want to do that. Thank you. I think the leader wants to respond. In terms of the telephone system, we've been looking at this. In terms of the timescale, we are looking at the technological changes that will be needed. And we will be looking at homeworking and to ensure that any system we put in place can work from home and in the office. In terms of the timescale, we'll have to undertake research before it's safe for us to do anything. And we'll need to make financial decisions as well in terms of Cysyllmaw. We are looking at Cysyllmaw. We're looking at what sort of service we can put in place. All of this is dependent on Covid. The new variant is being discussed. Things are looking okay. But we know that the situation can change very quickly. So we are looking at reopening Cysyllmaw, but it will be different to how it used to be. We're looking at a different model. And the democratic process, we are looking at bringing members back. We need to look at when we'll be bringing the council staff back in and councillors. At the moment, because we are able to work as councillors, we need to look at IT models for those who want to stay at home or have to stay at home. So we want to ensure that everybody can speak for their words. So we'll be looking perhaps at a combination of people working in the building and working from home. And that's everybody's contribution is equal in that model. It's, it is unsuitable to put a timetable on anything during this Covid period. I've learned that from experience. All I can do is ensure you that's the points you've raised today, including Councillor Rogers's points about the phone system. I want to congratulate young people on the island for being so excellent during this period. Every child and young person has been affected, no matter what their background is. I hope that I have addressed those points. I'm just one small link in the chain. But thank you for your very kind words. Councillor Bob Parry. I'd like to thank Linnos. She's provided leadership. She has two young children to look after as well. I don't think she's had many, much time off. Looking at the issue of paying for the green bin service. 14,000 people have paid for this service up to today. That means that 14,000 people in a very short period of time have contacted the council. And I must say that staff in the department who deal with this work long hours until 10pm some nights. I do apologize for the problems. We are looking at the phone system and to make sure that things will be better next year. What's different on Anglesey and like are the councils who pay for the green waste collection service? The majority sign up for the service online. On Anglesey, it's 60% online. But I promise that the situation will be better next year. Thank you. Councillor Peter Rogers.
Only very briefly, I am encouraged by the acceptance of, of the problems with the telephone service. I don't want to hear about it doing next year. We've really got to be looking at this straight away. You know, if we're not going to open the office, we've got to have a better means of coming in. Because that is the only thing that I do have to reiterate. There was real anger out there about the, the way to communicate with the council. And we can't carry on with that. Thank you very much indeed for a fair hearing.
Any other comments or questions before we have a vote on the report? Councillor John Aron Robert. I'd like to thank Linnos. I'm on the phone with her very often and she's very good. I'd also like to thank Anne-Wen. She works every day and night. And I'd like to thank the officers as well. Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we have a vote? Linnos, have you got your hand up? I'd like to thank Anne-Wen and Delan and Lynne and the senior leadership team and all the officers. Everybody's been excellent during this year. I've come to know a lot more members of staff. We're so fortunate as an authority. The staff's attitude towards their work is excellent. And they're here for the citizens of Anglesey. They want to do the best they can for the people of Anglesey. So can I thank Anne-Wen? I've spoken to Anne-Wen more this year than I've ever done before. Thank you. So we'll have the votes now, please. So in favour or against the report, Councillor Richadew, accept. Councillor Geoff Evans.
I'm in favour. Thank you.
Councillor John Griffiths, accept. Councillor Richard Griffiths, accept. Councillor Glenn Haines.
Accept.
Councillor Swamile O'Teas, accept. Councillor Ken Hughes, accept. Councillor Bob Hughes, accept very graciously. Councillor Carwyn Jones, accept. Councillor Midron Jones. Yes, I accept. And I must say very grateful. Councillor Eric Wood Jones, accept. Councillor Bob Flahlin, accept. Councillor Alec Morris-Jones, accept. Councillor Quillimore Jones, in favour. Councillor Richard O'Jones. Oh, he's not here, sorry. Councillor Libberty. I accept the report with a comment that the leader has an old head on the young shoulders. Councillor Bob Parry, accept. Councillor Gary Pritchard, accept. Councillor Delan Rees. An excellent report and I accept. Councillor Alec Roberts, I echo the words of Councillor Delan Rees and accept. Councillor David Roberts, accept. Councillor John Aron Roberts, accept. Councillor Nicola Roberts, accept with thanks. Councillor Peter Rogers.
Accept.
Councillor David His Thomas, accept with thanks. Councillor Robbie Williams, accept with thanks. That's unanimous again. Thank you.
No, 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 no. Could he do it? Could he do it again?
Yes, we can hear the translations coming through now, is it?
Yeah, I could hear you then.
Okay, that's fine.
No, we're back, we're back on. Thank you very much. Thank you. But I did it deliberately.
Apologies for that. If there's any problem, remember that you say early enough so that I can.
Please let me know and I'll speak in English.
Wait for me to be corrected. That's fine. As I say, it's my second report for myself. And as for all of you, it's been a difficulty as a standards committee because of not being able to meet face to face and deal with different matters. We've also had to respond to meetings virtually. And as I said last year, if I remember rightly, we were a new panel. And therefore it's been difficult to build a team, if you like. And it's only face to face, we usually are able to build on the ability to be a team. And I'm glad to say that we've responded very positively to this period and have been able to conduct formal meetings and informal meetings to deal with what's come before us. And we're very glad from the collaboration we've had from councillors and officers. But I'll deal, I'll thank you more formally later on. So the main points during the year, I would say. So the main points during the year, I would say, is that we've had an opportunity to act on is the applications for dispensation for all councils because of the six month rule. We've just finished reviewing the register of interest by an example of five town and community councils on the island. I'm very glad to note the willingness to be part of the review, the good work that's happening in the town and community councils and the enthusiasm of the clerks also regarding their work. There will be a full report coming to you in the meantime, but one comment that I have is one council have responded to the virtual challenge and we're very glad of that. But one council is conducting their meetings virtually and are open to the public. So that's a message to the county council, I think. One community council is doing that. We're very glad of that. And we've also dealt, as usual, with minor complaints. And have shown the importance of the local resolution protocol and try to ensure that the best we can. And we've also tried to convey the message differently to you and town and community councils by providing a newsletter. The feeling was that the maybe long letter was being forgotten, but that's something as many things are in this day and age, less is more, something up and she brings the message across better. So what I've tried to do is show from any complaints, not only here, but throughout Wales, that there are lessons to be learnt. And we've tried to bring those as a positive programme to the attention of people so that we can learn from what's happening in different areas and the type of complaints that come to the attention of the ombudsman. I'd like to hear just thank sincerely. You know, I've heard and you've all heard the thanks that have been expressed to the officers of the council. And we as a panel also are very appreciative of the support and the wise advice that we have received from the officers. Again, as you know, in a very difficult period for everyone with different priorities. Officers turning their hands to different matters, we've been very lucky. And I want to thank yourselves as a council, county councillors, town and community councils for your willingness to listen to us and to discuss with us when needed. Last year, I reported thinking that we were very glad that there weren't as many complaints as had been in past. And this year, there are even less complaints. So we are very grateful of that. But we have to continue to sustain the standards. That's the message in a way. That we are here to help and to assist to sustain these standards that seem to be very good at the moment. And I think not our emphasis, but the way that we look at local resolution as well. We are trying to promote that as a way of solving problems before they become more serious problems and have to come to our attention. We think that is something that is worth considering and we will be pressing for that more and more in future. An excellent example of work. Yes, I'm going to say it. An example of our work, I think, is the fact that we've been able to conduct a dispensation hearing in July to consider an application of 29 councillors in relation to Rule 20 dispensation. And that happened virtually and effectively. And that is of benefit to you as councillors to be able to do your work more effectively. And when we do go around the town and community councils, we do ask them also to consider this. In case they could adopt this to come over any difficulties that they do have in the administration processes as well. We as a panel, of course, recommend members to be following the training and development programme that is offered by the county council. We do feel this is very important. In a way to escalate, if you like, or develop the skills that you already have to be an effective council. As I've said, we, there will be a report coming to you regarding the reviews of the town and community councils. And just a forewarning in a way, the next year we will be looking at the registers that are within your control as councillors. So that will be happening next year, hopefully. We've given attention also to the consultation and the code of conduct by the Public Ombudsman Wales. And we did expect some kind of announcements last week, but it hasn't come yet. We hope that they have listened to our wise words, but also Welsh government are also looking at the code of conduct and there will be work to be done to look at what they have announced. And we're also waiting for the local government act to come into fruition next year. There'll be work for yourselves and for us with some changes as far as that is concerned. Therefore, what we're asking for you to note the reports introduced by the Chair of the Standards Committee in Appendix A. And then Appendix B to approve the work programme for the Standards Committee for 2122. That is outlined in Appendix B. Just quickly. Appendix A goes into more detail, I think, about the work that we have achieved. And to think. Apologies, I thought someone was trying to say something. We go into more detail in Appendix A and try to recognise, as I say, the collaboration that we've had and we've met with the group leaders from time to time. That's been beneficial and something that will happen from time to time when matters of interest do arise. As I say, we've discussed the reviews. We do emphasise also the annual reports that the councillors do prepare. We think that's a good practice. And a way of promoting the excellent work that is done by yourselves as councillors of the island. I think it's something that's worth doing and we do keep an eye on that. And I don't think there's anything else that I want to bring to your attention from Appendix A. And then Appendix B next year. There are questions regarding capacity next year that we're trying to solve. And maybe we'll have to relook at some things we can and can't do. But definitely the review of registers is something we think is important. And we will be looking at and discussing training for the new intake of councillors that will arrive in 2022. Therefore, Chair, that is my report. And once again, can I thank you for your time this morning? It's nice to be able to listen on mute, but there we go. Of course, if somebody, anybody wants to ask any questions, I'll try my best to ask, to answer any questions. But the recommendations are that the annual report and notes the programme by the Standards Committee between May 2020 and 2021. And if also, if possible, to approve the programme of the Standards Committee for 2122. That is outlined in Appendix B. Thank you very much for your time this morning. Thank you very much. And I believe you've done the work of councillor David His Thomas for him. He is the proposer. Oh, yes, I better do that as well. It's a pleasure to propose that the county council endorses the recommendations in the report. Thank you very much. And the leader to second? Yes, and can I second and thank you very much for your work. And the meetings with the group leaders have been very beneficial. Thank you very much. So thank you. And you can share the, our thanks with all the members of the Standards Committee as well. Thank you very much. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or question before we go to a vote to accept the report? No? Councillor Ken Hughes? Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I'm glad to hear that the behaviour of everyone is exceptional. Maybe they're scared of John, that nobody wants to come in. Maybe you've got influence already on us, John. But one word of advice from someone who is a little bit older. Keep to the responsibilities that are active by yourselves. And I'm talking about the annual report that's voluntary. And it's up to each individual to make the decision on that. So just a word of advice on that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else with any question or comment? Okay, we'll go to a vote to accept the report. Councillor Richard Dew, accept. Councillor Jeff Evans?
Yes, I accept.
Councillor John Griffiths? Councillor Richard Griffiths? Councillor Glenn Haines?
Accept.
Councillor Trevor Lloyd Hughes, accept. Councillor Ken Hughes, accept. Councillor Von Hughes, accept. Councillor Carmin Jones, accept. Councillor Maryon Jones, accept. Councillor Eric Jones, accept. Councillor Robert Llewellyn Jones? Accept. Councillor Alad Morris Jones, accept. Chair, councillor Quillimoe Jones, accept. Councillor Alain Membury? Accept. Councillor Brian Owen, accept. Councillor Bob Paddy, accept. Councillor Gary Pritchard, accept. Councillor Delan Rees, accept. Councillor Alan Roberts, accept. Councillor David Roberts, accept. Councillor John Arwa Roberts, accept. Councillor Nicola Roberts, accept. Councillor Peter Rogers?
Accept.
Councillor Yehan Williams, accept. And councillor Robin Williams, accept. And that's unanimous once again. Thank you very much. Then we move forward to an overview of the scrutiny annual reports 202021. Can I ask councillor Alad Morris Jones to come forward, please? Thank you, Chair. It's a pleasure to propose the report for the year that has been 202021. For the work that has happened in scrutiny, as we know, for a period of last year, we weren't able to do our work because of the pandemic. But we began back on the scrutiny trail in September of last year by using virtual meetings such as this meeting. Can I thank the officers that have come before us with information on many different subjects? I am glad to say I was keen that we did scrutinise the work of the council during the pandemic period. And we've been able to do that twice in September and in April of this year. And that we make sure that we do learn lessons with the way forward because as we know, where we are at the moment, the situation does change from day to day. We have dealt with setting the budget. And except this time, there wasn't the same opportunity to look at the budget before it went out to consultation. We only looked when the budgets came back. And that was fair enough because the timeline was very tight because of the pandemic period. Also, we've been looking at the performance monitoring over this period and have looked at the social, Director of Social Services report. And I've looked at the transformation of schools' priorities as well. We have brought a public speaking protocol into the scrutiny committees personally. I do have my reservations about that public speaking protocol, but I do accept that it has been adopted by the council. Can I also thank the panels, the sub panels of finance? And also the Social Services Improvement Panel, which also meets. And with those few words, I propose the report, Chair. Thank you very much. And if I could ask the councillor Quillimoe Jones to second, please? Well, it's a pleasure to be able to second that proposal by councillor Alad Morris Jones. And can I just make a few comments, if that's okay, Chair, on the work of the Partnership Regeneration Scrutiny Committee? And first of all, can I thank the members of the committees? Thank them for their contributions and their commitment to the work of this committee, a committee that's definitely made an important contribution to achieving the council plan and conducting the standards of our public services. Both scrutiny committees met, as we've heard, since the beginning of the pandemic during September of this year. And since then, the partnership committee has met consistently and has re started looking at the work of scrutinising key partnerships and all statutory requirements. Having said that, some partnership that have been arranged have been delayed because of the pandemic and the forward work programme of the committee will have to be adjusted. And because of the pressures of some of our partners we're facing. We scrutinise a number of annual reports of our partners, including the annual report of the community safeguarding, the annual report of the Regional Partnership Board of Social and Health Social Services and the Gwer Progress, just to name a sum of the reports that were looked at. This is also the committee that scrutinised the work of the North Wales Ambition Board, which will be essential to ensure the economic benefits for North Wales and Anglesey specifically. As we move forward, we'll have to ensure that statutory items are greeted and possibly we'll have to ensure that attention is given to the items that slipped as a result of this pandemic during 2020. For example, the Betty Cadwallader Health Board, the North Wales Fire Service Authority, the Ambulance Service Trust, the PCC and Medron Morn and North Wales Emergency Planning as well. And there's an intention to invite these partners where the work has slipped as a result of the pandemic to discuss their partnership working in line with the recovery period. And we do intend to invite Betty Cadwallader, the director to us. We have had an application from one. The director to us, we have had an application from one of our members from the Holyhead area to do so. As we've heard also. The scrutiny panels that we have in Anglesey report to the both scrutiny committees and the panel that reports back to. The committee that I chair is the school modernisation, sorry, the school review panel. And this sub panel has restarted the work. Since September twenty twenty onwards, and that has included meeting head teachers of one. Primary school and two secondary school to look at the Gwer report, the response of the learning service to Covid nineteen. Scrutiny of development of additional learning needs partners and inclusion of Guinead and Anglesey. A self evaluation. Exercise and. This has all added value and assisted the committee with their work of scrutiny. I would therefore like to thank all members of the scrutiny committees, partnership and regeneration. And the school panels as well for the great and effective teamwork that has been done over the last year. All members have adapted and ensured that the scrutiny does continue virtually throughout the pandemic. And I feel that many of the aspects and the good elements will continue to the future. And it's also mean that the council will scrutinise in an innovative way and make the best use of time of officers and members, elected members. And by thanking you all, I must recognise at the end like this, the excellent work that has been done by the officer that is. Responsible for all the arrangements, Miss Sean Adro, we are very proud of her clear direction at all times, thank you very much. Does anybody have a question or comment? No? Okay, we'll go to accept the report. Councillor Richard Dew, accept. Councillor Jeff Evans.
I accept.
Councillor John Griffiths, accept. Councillor Richard Griffiths, accept. Councillor Glenn Haynes.
Accept.
Councillor Trevor Lloyd Hughes, accept. Councillor Ken Hughes, accept. Councillor Vaughan Hughes, accept. Councillor Llinos Meddy, thank you to all members and accept. Councillor Carwyn Jones, accept. Councillor Merion Jones, accept. Councillor Eric Wyn Jones, accept. Councillor Robert Llewellyn Jones, accept. Councillor Alan Mymory, accept. Councillor Brian Owen, accept. Councillor Bob Parry, accept. Councillor Gary Pritchard, accept. Councillor Don Rees, accept. Councillor Alan Roberts, accept. Councillor David Roberts, accept. Councillor John Arwa Roberts. Accept. Councillor Nicola Roberts, accept. Councillor Peter Rogers.
Accept.
Councillor David Is Thomas, accept. Councillor Yehan Williams, accept. And councillor Robin Williams, accept. Thank you very much. As we go on to item nine in the annual report of the democratic services annual report twenty 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 one, if I can ask the councillor Robert. For Alan Jones to propose, please, thank you very much, Chair. This is a report on the work of the democratic services. During the last year. I'll just give the recommendation after just saying a quick word. As Chair of this important committee, can I thank Mr Hugh Jones and officers who have been working. So hard on behalf of the people of Anglesey and also the crew that are working with who. I'm sure that we're all. Remember the year that has gone and how officers. Worked so well and the effect on the pandemic and continuing now, but the work hasn't finished yet, I'm sure. They weren't, they didn't receive any training or didn't have any experience of how to deal with the work of tackling the changes. To be working in totally different ways that we had been. For many years previously. How do you start working from home and ask councillors and officers to change the way? That we all were used to working overnight. But they did give confidence to us as councillors. So that everything, as they say. Was under control, as they say, and therefore we, the councillors, were able to pass that message on. That there was a process in place within the council, Anglesey council. Can I also draw your attention and thank to the work that was done by the leader? As we've seen during the year that has passed. Councillor Llinos Meddy Hughes led the council so well and worked very long hours. Cymaeth iawr, cymaeth iwmen, as they say. And therefore, on behalf of us all, thank Llinos very much and remember. The partnership that has worked so well between Llinos and Mrs Anwyr Morgan. And remember, Mrs Morgan did break her leg and carry on during this period. And thank you very much to her for. The work that they have done over the year that has been, thank you for leading the council. And giving those long hours to make sure that the people of Anglesey. Have faith to carry on. Therefore, Chair. I won't forget to thank yourself as well for running the council as Chair. You've been a very good Chair, keeping order on us all and leading us all with a way forward. Thank you very much to you as well. Therefore, can I give the recommendation that we accept the reports? And note the matters considered by the Democratic Services Committee during twenty 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 one. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you very much for the proposal and for the kind words, and I think the leader is going to second, thank you. Happy to second the report, thank you. Thank you very much, are there any comments or questions by anyone? No one? Shout out if you think I don't, can't hear you. Okay then, we'll go to a vote then, did anyone say anything there? No? Before we go to the vote, okay. Are you in favour? The recommendation that the County Council endorses the recommendation, councillor Richard Dew. Councillor Richard Dew, accept, councillor Jeff Evans.
Accept.
Councillor John Griffiths, accept. Councillor Richard Griffiths, accept. Councillor Glenn Haynes.
Accept.
Councillor Trevor Lloyd Hughes, accept. Councillor Ken Hughes, accept. Councillor Vaughan Hughes, accept. Councillor Llinos Meddy Hughes, apologies, you seconded. Councillor Carwyn Jones, accept. Councillor Merion Jones, accept. Councillor Eric Wyn Jones, accept. Councillor Alan Morris Jones, accept, Chair. Councillor Gilliam Jones, accept. Councillor. Councillor Alan Mymory, accept. Councillor Brian Owen, accept. Councillor Bob Parry, accept. Councillor Gary Pritchard, accepts. Councillor Don Rees, accept. Councillor Alan Roberts, accept. Councillor David Roberts, accept. Councillor John Arwa Roberts, accept. Councillor Nicola Roberts, accept. Councillor Peter Rogers.
Accept.
Councillor David Is Thomas, accepts. Councillor Yehan Williams, accept. Councillor Robin Williams, accepts. Thank you very much. That's unanimous also, I think. If we move on then for to item ten, which is the, receive the report and head the regulation economic development. If I ask councillor Richard Dew to propose, yes, thank you, Chair. I propose that the council. Proposes the recommendations of the executive to the statements of licensing policy twenty twenty one to twenty six. As presented to the executive on the twenty second of March this year, thank you very much. Thank you, and the leader's to second, yes, second that, thank you very much, is there any questions or comments on the licensing policy? No? Okay, we'll go straight to a vote then. Do you accept councillor Jeff Evans?
Yes, accept.
Also John Griffiths, accept. Councillor Richard Griffiths, accept. Councillor Glenn Haynes.
Accept.
Councillor Trevor Lloyd Hughes. Accepts, councillor Ken Hughes, accepts, councillor Vaughan Hughes, accepts. Councillor Carwyn Jones, accepts, councillor Merion Jones, accepts. Maybe I should say that we have been looking at this document previously in case the public think. That we're not given a due attention, but we have seen the documents previously. On their journey towards this council, thank you, thank you for that explanation, councillor Merion Jones. Councillor Eric Wyn Jones, accepts. Councillor Robert Llewellyn Jones, yes, accept. Councillor Alan Morris Jones, accept, Chair. Councillor Gillimoe Jones, accept. Councillor Alan Mymory, accept. Councillor Brian Owen, accept. Councillor Bob Parry. Accept, councillor Gary Pritchard, accept. Councillor Don Rees, accept. Councillor Alan Roberts, accept. Councillor David Roberts, accept. Councillor John Arwa Roberts, accept. Councillor Nicola Roberts. Councillor Peter Rogers.
Accept.
Councillor David Is Thomas, accept. Councillor Yehan Williams, accepts. And councillor Robin Williams, accepts. Thank you, and item eleven, executive decisions between May twenty twenty and April twenty twenty one. I take it the chief executive doesn't want to say a word, so councillor David Is Thomas to propose the report. You're on mute, apologies, apologies, sorry. I take it everybody has had an opportunity to read through the report and I propose the council accepts this report. Thank you very much, and the councillor to second, yes, I second that, anyone with any questions or comments before we go to a vote? No? Very quiet this morning, okay, thank you, councillor Richard Dew, accept. Councillor Jeff Evans.
Accept.
Councillor John Griffiths, accept. Councillor Richard Griffiths, accept. Councillor Glenn Haynes.
Accept.
Councillor Trevor Lloyd Hughes, accept. Councillor Ken Hughes, accept. Councillor Vaughan Hughes, accept. Councillor Carwyn Jones, accept. Councillor Merion Jones, accept. Councillor Eric Wyn Jones, accept. Councillor Robert Llewellyn Jones, accept. Councillor Alan Morris Jones, accept. Councillor Gillimoe Jones, accept. Councillor Alan Mymory, accept. Councillor Brian Owen, accept. Councillor Bob Parry, accept. Councillor Gary Pritchard, accept. Councillor Don Rees, accept. Councillor Alan Roberts, accept. Councillor David Roberts, accept. Councillor John Arwa Roberts. Accept. Councillor Nicola Roberts, accept. Councillor Peter Rogers.
Accept.
Councillor Yehan Williams, accept. And councillor Robin Williams, accept. Thank you.